Good evening, everyone. The regular business meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors of October 23rd is called to order. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wasersstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you for the public's information. My colleague and vice chair, Mr. Nate Hogan, has joined us via Skype this evening. So, thank you, everyone, for being present tonight. I would like to ask my colleagues to take a look at the agenda for this evening. Is there any objection to approval of the agenda? If not, it would be in order to receive a motion for acceptance of the agenda.
Summate.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yeah.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasersstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. For this evening's public comment section, we have three individuals who've indicated they wish to address the board. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. To begin, the chair recognizes Demonte Rochester with the District Advisory Committee. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, members of the board. Our next DAC general meeting will be held on November 13th, where we're focusing on parent input. Our agenda is as follows. Parent comment moment, more like this format here we have tonight, is going to be kind of similar, where we begin to generate public parent comments. And then number two is going to demonstrate Let's Talk, so parents know how to use Let's Talk and get more feedback from the district standpoint. And then number three is we'll do a presentation from Shawnee Schools to do a presentation on the Parent Bill of Rights. And then lastly, we'll have U.S. Tennis Association doing a presentation. And then lastly, we're doing a 2020 legislative agenda by our own Jennifer Wolfsee. This will complete our agenda for November 13th. Glad you'd join us if you'd like. Thanks.
Thank you. The next individual for public comment is Steve Burton of the District Advisory Committee. Good evening, Mr. Burton.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As you know, I'm chairing the two subcommittees that the DAC has. There is a third one, a legislative, that Susan Stocking is in charge of. What I wanted to speak to tonight is I just want to encourage you to develop your concepts of creating a quality educational program within KCPS that ensures that after-school programs are required and not just present. Organizations like LINK that serve your elementary students with after-school programming should build out their offerings more closely to align with KCPS academics and athletics. While KCPS offers middle school and high school students a variety of sports opportunities, some of those schools are still lacking in non-athletic clubs and activities that they can participate in after-school. Organizations like the After School Alliance and the Missouri After School Network are great resources to help develop these after-school programming. The After School Alliance research involving after-school programming shows just a few of these scenes. They approximate that there are 15 million students across the nation that have no place to go after-school. After-school programs help working parents bridge the time gap that they have between the school hours when they close and when they arrive home from work to take care of their children. Teens in after-school programming have lower absenteeism, are less likely to use drugs and alcohol, get better grades, show improved behavior, and express greater hopes for their future and more interest in school, which are all things I'm sure we'd agree on. Two-thirds of parents indicate that they have difficulty finding any such programs within their local community. Juvenile crime and victimization is shown to peak during the hours of 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. on school days, which obviously indicates the importance of providing positive activities for our youth to participate in. Lastly, I'd like to say that it's my hope that both of these subcommittees that I'm chairing will be willing to help identify ways to build out these after-school programs. We realize their limited resources cannot always address these types of student needs, so funding from various organizations and building a robust volunteer program may help bridge the financial gap. I recently went to my high school reunion, a 10-year reunion now, it's somewhere beyond that. But one thing that I noticed when I was there, there weren't a whole lot of people from my era. But the one thing I did notice is that most of the people that were there were past athletes. They had participated in sports. There were a few others that were there because they had fond memories of school from participating in clubs and activities after-school. So in closing, I'd just like to say that I hope that we can help these students have just as fond of memories of their lives here at KCPS with high-quality after-school programming, so that those students build those memories and become proud KCPS alumni. Thank you.
Thank you. The board now invites Mr. Tom Love to speak on the important foundation that is kindergarten. Mr. Love, are you present this evening? There you are. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to share the fact that children can go to kindergarten a second year. It's not going to affect them psychologically or anything like that. And it's totally funded. In fact, I think if you'd gone to kindergarten, you'd probably think that was a great experience. Now, I don't know whether or not there's recesses, the number of recesses that's needed in kindergarten or in first or second grade, but that was some of my best experiences. So I'd like for people to check in, because I'd heard that one school in particular only had one recess several years ago, and then they canceled that because some boy poked someone with a pencil or something. But children need playtime, you know, like we need breaks. They need playtime. And they learn to interact and get along, and so I'm going to push for recesses and kindergarten. And the funding that's available, a number of years ago, when Dr. Green was here, they identified that 40% of the students entering kindergarten were 11 months behind. So that's a significant gap. And I believe that with this extra year for some of the students, we can close that achievement gap. Typically, I've been told by some experts that there's two or three children in each kindergarten class that just developmentally aren't ready to start. They're typically boys. We're six months developmentally younger than girls. And there's such a span. I talked to a kindergarten teacher several years ago at one of the elementary schools here, and it was explained to me that there was a really wide range in that class. There was a girl who was just beginning to read at second-grade level, and then there were other children who were still trying to learn their alphabet. Well, you know, we were actually trying to graduate, like, close to 40% of the students as 17-year-olds, and not taking anything into account about the individual child that needs that extra help. So it's funded. There's lots of things that have been funded. We have an extra year of school available for students now before you enter sixth grade. How do we get that? Summer school. It was funded. The district wasn't even aware of it. It was shocking to me, but Dr. Green says, "Is this really true?" Yeah. So we went from 1,500 students trying to get their credits to graduate in high school to 7,000 children are going to summer school. Five weeks times seven years. It's been seven years. That's 175 days. That's a school year. Funded. It's all there. We have 1,000 hours of tutoring available now, tutoring for reading, which is the biggest problem that our district has. We've got K through second grade. Kindergarten's important because you can identify dyslexia in kindergarten 90% of the time. And we've got that now, and they're starting this year, and there's 200 potential hours a year for three years. That's 600 hours of tutoring in reading from a master's degree reading specialist. And then we have the dyslexia, I'm sorry, the illiteracy law in Missouri for an additional three years, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And that's if we want to utilize it. I mean, the minimum is 70 hours a year, but you could go every day and get tutoring. We can totally eradicate illiteracy, I mean, we can come close to eradicating illiteracy here in the state of Missouri. St. Louis is making the same mistakes. I talked to the Assistant Commissioner of Education. He wasn't aware of it, but they had nothing but zeros on their pages for complying with Senate Bill 319. Not one hour requested. People aren't aware of the laws that are available, and we have the solutions. All we have to do is implement them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. I appreciate that. Before I move on to the next item, I want to make sure that everyone here knows that at the second meeting of every month, the board accepts public comment from the community. It can be a community member. It can be a parent. It could even be a student within our district or outside of our district. If you are interested in speaking at a future meeting for public comment, we ask you to notify the board secretary, Ms. June Kolkmeier, whose email you can find online, and she can sign you up for a slot to speak to the board. Thank you so much. The next item of business is the Board of Directors' report for the presentation of the evening's revenue and expenditure report. The chair recognizes Board Treasurer Manny Abarka.
Sorry, I'm dealing with my colleague Nate as well in Louisville. So, all right. So, real quick here, Lynda and her amazing team have been modifying this budget to present us with a more line-item-focused effort to provide a more transparent process for our budgeting. So if you skip the first page, because that's just a cover photo, a couple of things to notice. Broken out by the funds provide a better picture of our total operation. So you see our three basic pots of money here that we operate from within. And so a couple key points here is that they have separated out the capital projects fund directly, because as we all learned at our retreats, spade stick, as does money put into capital projects funds. And so once the money goes into there, it can't come back out. So that is an important element to understand, and one of the reasons why in the initial budgeting process, that particular fund carries a low cash amount in that fund directly.
Mr. Abarka, one second. I think, are we trying to get the slides up so that the community can see?
Yes.
Awesome. Slides are not, so speak very slowly.
Well, in that case...
Oh, no.
The...
Does everybody have a handout?
We do have handouts, I believe, out on the table if I want to have you go ahead and continue, but I know they're trying to resolve the problem.
There's beautiful artwork on the wall, if you haven't noticed already. I'm sure that at some point, it's going to be up for auction, maybe, and go to that route. Aha, here we go. Okay. So, we're not on the right slide.
That was on me. I didn't have it turned on. Sorry.
Wrong slide, right?
Where do you want to be?
Uh, two.
This one or four?
Uh, sorry, I can't...
This is local revenues.
So we are on summary revenues, expenditures, fund balance.
Yep. Local revenue?
Oh, yeah, that'll work. Okay. All right, so moving on to local revenues. So it's important to look at line 5111, current taxes, 5112, delinquent taxes. Sorry, I changed again. So the important note here is that 80% of our total local revenue is based on our property taxes, and that's 64% of our total revenue that comes in for the district. And so this is one of the reasons why we grappled with the very tough decision that we made previously about the acceptance of these property taxes. If you look to line 5651, this is where Lynda and the amazing administration have managed to, I don't even know what the mathematical formula is, to get to a 9359% increase in revenue for the line item of sale of property. But this is income from the sale of our previous administration building downtown. And so kudos to the team for accomplishing that sale. As you can see, that revenue has been accepted, right, Lynda? It looks like 5%.
Yes.
And this is actually what we're going to be budgeting or spending later on today. So this is income that has been received at this point because of that sale. So you can also see some of the breakdowns here as to the other income that is brought in from our revenue side, the county. This is a question that I just happened to catch and ask Lynda, so I'm going to put her on the spot momentarily. But line 5311, basic formula state monies, that is a large number here. That is, why, Lynda?
That's a negative number this year in our budget, because, as I'll remind you, because I know that you guys know and remember this, the way Desi passes through local revenues to the charter schools inside the KCPS boundaries is via a reduction of our state revenues. And this year, because of where the assessed values have moved and the weighted average daily attendance, we are going to actually owe the charters more than the state revenue allows, and so it's a negative number in that regard.
Right. So we do receive state money that then pass throughs us and goes directly to charter schools this year more than what we actually receive. So, just wanted to make sure and underline that point. Moving on to slide five here, you can see right now that we've received a total of 14% of our total revenue, and this is due to the fact that we collect our revenues between January and February, right, Lynda? And so we are going to spend a lot upfront, and just in terms of the process to how we actually collect the money. So that is why we are at where we're at there. The pie chart is always fun to look at. This local revenue, obviously, is mostly property tax here, that you can see is a massive majority of our total budget. I better refer back to my notes before Lynda beats me up a little bit. All right. So, total expenditures here, salary and benefits of 69.95% of our total budget, and so it shows you as we start to look at the priorities for the district and where we place our dollars, it is actually a significant portion directed direct to our employees. So you can see the breakdowns there, not only with the actual pay, but also the fringe benefits there. You can also go down and break out each of the individual line items now to see where these expenditures lie. So I encourage you all to go through this if you feel so inclined, and provide us questions if you have any from there. One specific area where I believe this month we are focusing is in our investment side, and Lynda has provided us more access and understanding here to know about our investments. And so as we look at slide 11 here, you can see that the purchase date of our investments are stated there, and the term is also outlined. You'll see that these two-thirds needed to fund, before January, to fund an ongoing expense. So this is one of the ways that we maintain the operations of our cash flow within the organization because of the heavy outlay of expenditures upfront. That's it for my end. Lynda, what did I miss? Thank you for the amazing notes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members regarding this report? Thank you so much for this presentation. At this time, I want to ask if any of the ad hoc committees wish to make a report to the board this evening? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I just want to let the audience in the group watching that the Government Relations Committee met this month. Our next meeting is November. I just want to make sure everybody knows, so that, I believe it is November 19th or the 12th, November the 12th. And what we are doing is finalizing our legislative priorities for 2020, and we hope to be able to present and adopt those at the November 6th meeting.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I would just give a brief report about the Communications and Community Engagement Committee. My colleagues, Manny Abarka and Rita Cortez, we sit on that committee. We did meet as well last week, and mainly, the main purpose of that meeting was to review our objectives and make sure that we're all on the same page as to what that committee entails. We also talked about the need for us to really be a more present entity within the community and discuss ways of best doing that. So just to make sure you're all aware, that on December 11th, we are back on the road for our board meeting. So the meeting we're having today will be at James Elementary. And that's just one of our efforts that the previous boards have began to ensure that we have a presence. So what we're looking forward to doing is making that a more significant presence. So we'll be, we talked about having a meet and greet with refreshments for the community an hour or so before the board meeting, on-site at James Elementary, really getting to meet the parents and people from the community. Anyone who wants to come and talk to board members will have a designated space there. So if you want to just kind of chat and find out what's going on with your school board, we'd be happy to engage with you. We've also talked about how we want to continue to push the Let's Talk mechanism whereby the community can express any concerns that they might have. So if you reach out to a board member and we say, "Hey, thank you for telling me about this. I want to push you to Let's Talk." It's not that we're trying to push you off, but actually, Let's Talk, as I've even learned, is really beneficial because it's routed to the correct staff. It's timed. They have a designated timeframe within which they have to respond. And just like when you go to McDonald's or something, you get a feedback form. So you could even give good feedback to the district about how well your concern was addressed. So it's a really positive thing. So when we say, let's use Let's Talk, it's not as a way to stop engagement, but to actually improve the accountability around it. Just another couple of quick notes. We definitely would like to continue the opportunity for you to get to know who we are. So as you refer to the plug, which I just know everybody checks weekly, the plug on the Kansas City Public Schools website, just want to let you know that there will be some additional items added to that eventually to give you more of a frame for what the board is thinking about. So, Madam Chair, that's all I have for now.
Thank you so much. Appreciate those updates. The next item of business is discussion and approval of a representative for Kansas City Public Schools on the Central City Sales Tax Commission. As you, my colleagues, know, one of the responsibilities we have is appointing an individual to represent Kansas City Public Schools on the five-person commission that makes recommendations regarding use of the Central City Sales Tax. That's a 1/8 cent sales tax. There is a five-member commission. Kansas City Public Schools has one representative. The mayor has three representatives that he can appoint, and the Jackson County has one representative. So the school board, last week on Thursday, October 17th, we interviewed seven individuals who were interested in serving on the Central City Sales Tax Commission. These individuals all met our basic criteria for consideration. That criteria is they must be resident within the boundaries of the Kansas City School District, and so must have, must, that is the main criteria. And then in addition, we look for individuals who have knowledge of the affected designated area and also understanding of development and the needs within that area. And so at this point in time, I want to just name the individuals that we interviewed, and then my next request would be to entertain a motion for an appointment. So the individuals we interviewed last week were Chris Evans, Matthew Coats, Kenneth Bakas, Von Dragus Smalley, Nicholas Bach, Brian Van Oostdale, and Kevon Graves. So with this, I entertain any motion for a candidate for consideration.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Ken Bakas to serve in that capacity.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate or discussion on that particular motion by my colleagues?
Madam Chair, I just want to justify why the nominee, I believe, is beneficial for our representation. I think Ken was one of the founders of the Central City Sales Tax Initiative from the petition process and is a key member of that specific community that outlines it within that boundary. In addition to his wealth of development knowledge and the importance of maintaining stability for the Central City Sales Tax in its third year of a 10-year process, this term is pivotal to make sure that they are successful as an entity, and I think Ken can perform to the best of his ability like he has these previous years, and it is for that reason that I nominate him tonight.
Are there any other comments on the motion before you? I think I just, Rita, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
I will lose every time with this microphone. I just wanted to share, while I have great appreciation for Mr. Bakas's experience and his longevity in the roles in the community, I think one of the exciting parts about this process is that we had a number of really strong candidates. And there were some folks who I thought brought some fresh ideas and are very invested business people in the community. So I want to thank the community for really stepping up with the individuals who chose to participate in the process.
Thank you. And I think I want to make a similar comment. I was really impressed with the individuals who stepped forward. We had a number of really high-quality candidates. There was some slight variation in experience, but the commitment to the community and the commitment, knowledge, and expertise regarding our school district, the passion for our school district, was really gratifying. We actually had several candidates who had direct personal experience with the school district and some who are parents in this school district right now. So it was impressive. I appreciate the skills of all of those individuals, and while I want to find ways to engage some of these individuals in other work, I'm looking at the superintendent as I say that, because we have amazing people that I hope that we can find roles for in our school district. I do support the motion. Mr. Bakas had served a three-month term. It was the remaining term of the prior candidate, Mr. Ron Finley, who became a Jackson County legislator. Therefore, he had to resign his seat. We had to fill that short term. This next appointment will run for four years, assuming Mr. Bakas can complete that appointment. Then there'll be an opportunity for yet another appointment to this commission. I feel, I think, like my colleague, Mr. Abarka, that there's an opportunity to get some traction here, and there's some urgency around getting traction on this work, and so I am in support of the motion as is. If there are no other questions or comments, then seeing none, then I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
No.
Mr. Hogan?
No.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasersstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes. We will notify Mr. Kenneth Bakas of the board's desire to have him continue to represent us on the Central City Economic Development Sales Tax Commission. The next items of business are the report of the superintendent. The chair recognizes Dr. Mark Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to give the community an update on the APR situation. As you all know, last week was the release of the assessment scores in the state and the state made a decision that they would report differently to our community on the five indicators that school districts are held accountable for in order to obtain their accountability. One of the things that changed is that the state is not going to post an APR score anymore. This report card will focus on the academic performance of your district overall, the academic performance of your subgroups, and then there are three additional indicators that it will look at: college and career readiness indicators, attendance rates, and graduation rates. And so it is confusing to many of our people within our community here locally because most people are trying to figure out what does that mean in terms of your accreditation as a school district. We have been able to work internally to try to do our own calculations. We have an idea of where we are as a school district. We're not in a position at this point to put that out publicly because of the fact that we're still waiting on our science scores. The science assessment, last year was the first time that we've taken that assessment. We don't know exactly what the cut score will be. We also do not have any idea what progress will be. What I can share with the community is we have closed the gaps two years in a row now in English and math, both in proficiency rates and also MPI points. So we're trending in the right direction and I think that's what we want to see happen in this school district. Additionally, we got our preliminary science scores back. And anytime you implement a new assessment, you have what is called an implementation dip. Everybody in the state drops, just like everybody dropped in the state when we took the reading and the math assessment. But what I can tell you early on is that we did not drop as far as everybody else did in the state, meaning that we closed gaps again against the state, both in MPI and proficient and advanced rates. And so we are pretty pleased with the work that we're seeing playing out in our schools. We still need a lot of support around attendance rates. I will be very clear with everyone, that continues to be a problem of mine and it's been a problem since I've come to this school district. But we are trending in a direction that I think the community will be happy to see when we go ahead and update our scorecard and then show the gap closing that we're doing against the state. And so what I hope to have happen is probably by November 20th board meeting, we should have our science information. And our goal is to give a full-blown presentation to the community as to where the district is. We still are in the game and potentially have an opportunity to get our accreditation. But as you all know, we've had a lot of shifts in assessments every year I've been here. Last year, we didn't, we had social studies. This year, we don't. So science wasn't in last year. This year, science in. It's going to take us several years before we're actually looking at comparing apples to apples. But despite all of that, I am pleased with the work that our educators are doing as we continue to move this school district forward. And we will update you all as we get the additional science information in the very near future.
Thank you for that. Dr. Bedell, I'll turn it back to you for the next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We want to move forward under the superintendent's report with our video highlight, which will highlight our Hispanic heritage in here in Kansas City. So let's move forward with that video. Well, we'll move on. Don't understand what's happening today with this.
Hola, bienvenidos a KCPS. This month, we celebrated the Hispanic heritage in Kansas City. KCPS organized different Hispanic heritage events for our staff, students, and the community. We launched an art contest open to all students of the district highlighting the Hispanic heritage. We did our first lunch and learn for the staff to celebrate and learn about the rich culture, heritage, diversity, influence, and contributions of Latinos in Kansas City. Here's some highlights of the lunch and learn. In social media, we posted about different Latinos that have made an impact in Kansas City. The Educated Pachuco was presented in different schools as a motivational skit by Dr. Cordova. Here is a few highlights of the Educated Pachuco at East High School. Through all these events, KCPS is promoting diversity with the participation of the Department of Equity, Inclusion, and Innovation. And last but not least, we are launching KCPS en español. KCPS en español is here. We are launching this platform on Facebook at KCPS en español and also on Instagram for parents and students to find out all the information they may need en español.
All right, moving on the continuing of our, thank you. Thank you. I will have Dr. Darryl Davis, who will now present awards to four of our winners on our Cisay Puente art competition. I hope I, did I do that right?
You said it quick. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Manser, members of the board and audience. We stand before you this evening to acknowledge our winners for the first-ever, well, this year's theme was Cisay Puente. It's our first-ever district-level art competition for Hispanic Heritage Month. As many of us know, Cisay Puente, a rallying cry used by Cesar Chavez in the 1970s to galvanize farmworkers to rise up against exploitation, demand better wages, and fairer work conditions. It's been used often to inspire people to achieve their goals. And so we simply wanted to allow young people to express through their creativity what Cisay Puente means to them. And so we did communicate this numerous ways through our principals, but also via the website. And we know that it was viewed because we also had some emails from parents outside of our school system whose young people may have attended private schools and so forth, asking if their children could enter this contest. We let them know this is a KCPS competition. The deadline was last week. You see a couple dozen of the pieces submitted around the room. So we encourage everyone to take a gallery walk before you leave. And then you see the members of the scoring committee there on the screen. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sherrell Faust, Director of Post-Secondary Programming, to take us through the remainder of this presentation.
Good evening. Dr. Davis left me with the fun part, presenting the awards. So as you can see, we did have a scoring rubric here that included creativity, effort, and then craftsmanship, and four awards that we are getting ready to present now. So unfortunately, Ariana could not make it this evening, so we will accept this on her behalf. She did receive first place. And you can see hers over here on the wall as well as up here. We do have, however, Ms. Brianna Perez that is here this evening. Welcome, Brianna. She's going to share with us her statement of inspiration that inspired the drawing that she did.
Hello, my name is Brianna Perez and I'm here to represent Wendell Phillips. I wanted to let everybody know that whatever happens, you can do it.
We're going to have her family come up so we can take pictures. Superintendent, yes.
Right in front of the screen. Yeah, okay.
Okay, Brianna, we'll have you pull up here. Now we'll recognize our next winner, secondary first place, Francisco. He's going to share with us his statement as well.
Hello, I'm not too great at public speaking, so bear with me. Okay. So my, I'm Francisco Lopez. I'm here from Lincoln. Excuse my shaky voice, it's just, I was inspired by the sudden events of the presidential election of 2016 that led to my embarrassing attitude toward my Hispanic culture. I felt the 2016 central focus on immigrant policy. I'm sorry, I'm not good at focusing. Okay. I felt the 2016 central focus on immigrant policy condemned Hispanics and this brought detriment to my own mental health. Being Hispanic, I became anxious to go out into public for fear of being discriminated or shown disgust. And so from that, I decided to draw what I consider to be myself, my genuine self. This piece of art proclaims that I am not a slave to my culture. I am far more than that. This drawing is a visual representation of my different passions and admirations, including my culture. It depicts my love of nature, my love of the ocean, my love of animals, and my love for different cultures as well, and my love for my parents' home, my parents' home countries, mountains of Colima, Mexico. Though not one of these aspects defined me individually, I embody the unification of these aspects. Thank you.
And our last award winner, Lizette Mendez. And what they're receiving in the envelopes are gift cards. So our runners-up receive $50 gift cards and our winners receive $100 gift cards.
Hi, my name is Lizette Mendez and I did a drawing of my baby sister. She inspired me because when she was born, she had...
I'll read for her. My baby sister inspired me with my submission. When she was born, she was diagnosed with type 1 neurofibromatosis, which may cause learning disabilities, tumors, sight, and hearing loss, and more. Despite that, my baby sister, whom at the moment is nearly a year old, began walking and copying what we do at a somewhat early age, around six to eight months. Her doctors were astonished at how quickly she was able to learn how to do these things and understand what we say, such as waving and saying bye-bye or trying to drink out of a cup. Every time I go to the doctor's office with my mother, the doctors comment on how she's growing. Well, although she has NF1, and I am proud of her because of the achievement she has done so far, despite her condition. Can we give all of our students a hand again? All of those who came, as well as all of those who participated and submitted these art projects. Thank you.
All right, just wanted to, again, also thank everyone that contributed. Also thank the young people. Want to thank Ms. Faust for taking a leading role on this committee. And also want to thank Dr. Shepherd for leading the brainstorm that resulted in this idea for this art contest. This was the first. It will not be the last. Also have to acknowledge the other members of the equity team. You see all this great artwork and decoration in here. Want to thank Ms. Serena Clinton, Ms. Evelyn Hill, Andrew Urban's not here. And then also, where is Jonathan Solomon? Hey, thank you. He created the poster and did a lot of other things. So thank you, everyone, and thank you, board.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, could you come back up to the podium real quick? And I think this is important before we move with this next recognition with Farmers Insurance. Just quickly, once again, let everybody know what your actual position is and why what we've just done is important and that this is the beginning of how this district will operate moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bedell. My position, I serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Equity, Inclusion, and Innovation. Our department, we stand to champion the importance of diversity and inclusion throughout the school system. We have also been charged by Dr. Bedell to lead the creation of an equity plan over the next two years with a completed document to go before this body in September of 2021. We're also looking at our post-secondary programming to make sure that all students have access to that programming, equitable access to that programming throughout all of our schools. We're speaking AP and IB, as well as our mentoring program, which as... We're speaking AP and IB, as well as our mentoring program, which as you know is now in its third year. And we know that young people oftentimes do not have the same equitable access to caring adults and other supporters, and so through that effort, we want to make sure we're taking care of individuals through that process as well.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And at this time, you need to just stay up, because now we will do our presentation from Farmers Insurance, and I want to give the podium back to you around this significant gift that they have provided us with our mentoring program. Then we'll come up, take a picture, and move forward with the agenda.
Okay, all right. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Mansur, members of the Board. We were honored to receive a donation of $15,000 for the mentoring initiative from Farmers Insurance. I'm going to turn it over to Farmers to kind of share some speaking points as to why this was important for you to support the effort.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Davis. I'm Eric Butler with my colleagues, Hesa Edwards and Tiffany Lowe. We are from the Black Professionals Alliance of Farmers Insurance, and we are all proud sponsor, sponsors of the Kansas City Public School Mentor Program. We're all actually active mentors in the program, and this is so meaningful to me because I am actually a proud alum of the Kansas City Public School District. I graduated from Northeast High School, and I had a mentor when I was in high school. I think it's very important for us as adults to let our inner-city youth know that there is an avenue for you to change your state and change your life in a public way, and we feel like the mentor program is just one of the avenues for us to do that. With our team, we are very excited to be able to donate $15,000 to the mentor program. And so without any further ado...
I need, I need all of y'all to move this direction, okay? There you go. Very good, big smiles. A couple of these, a whole tight. Okay, and one more. Great.
Thank you, Farmers, we appreciate you. This is a prime example of when schools can't do it alone, and when the community says we're going to step up and we're going to be a value add to you. So thank you again, and we are ready to move forward with our next agenda item, which is our early dismissal proposal for high school students. This is one of the items that we did bring to the Board previously, and at this point, we will seek action from the Board to move forward with the final exam schedule. Thank you. Dr. Slate?
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, members of the Board. As Dr. Bedell just stated, this is something that we talked about weeks ago. We had a 45-day engagement period with the community and also with students, so I'm just going to share those results with you and how we, what we want to propose as we move forward. Okay, here we have our graduation, tentative graduation schedule. We have six high schools, as you know, and on May 18th, we had three scheduled graduations. May 19th, we had three scheduled graduations. And on the right, what you see is our proposed half-day schedule. As a former high school principal, that last week of school was very hectic, it's a lot of challenges that are presented. So one of the reasons we want to propose this schedule is kind of make it that last week more beneficial for students, parents, and everybody who wants to really go to the graduation. So if you look on the right side of the schedule, on May, the, and I'm sorry, I need glasses now, I don't want to admit it to myself, on May 18th... I'm, I'm good. I'm, I'm going to put them on, I'm sorry. On May 18th, we have a half-day. So what will happen, we have seven periods during the day, and I'm, I'm good. So for those, for those three days, I'm, I'm good, thank you. For those three days, we'll make sure that, so for each half-day, students will go to school, two periods, and on those half-days, students will have their final exams, which will be mandatory, and we'll talk about why that's necessary. But on the first day, they'll have first and seventh period, the second day, second and sixth period, and on the last day, third and fifth period. So this will really benefit the entire high school body, but especially our two schools, Paseo and Central, that have a scheduled graduation at 1:30. Okay, so the benefits and potential concerns for doing this, if we do, if we move to the half-day schedule, students will have more time to study for exams. It's very difficult when you have four exams scheduled for the same day. So this will limit it to two exams each day. Students will leave out of school at 12, at 11, whatever time, and it'll give them time to go home and study and prepare and be ready for the next day. Students will also have a chance to attend the graduation ceremony. The gentleman talked about this earlier. If you're in the ninth grade, you still want to see your friends who are seniors graduate. And the way it really, it normally works, that students will be mandated to come to school, and they would miss seeing their friends walk across the stage. And the way things tie together, this will also lead to just increasing our students wanting to, who want to graduate by seeing, we had such a great promotional exercise last year for all of our schools, it'll make students who are ninth and 10th grade want to get to the 12th grade and graduate. Also attendance, that last week of school is, is the worst week for attendance because once those seniors finish school, the rest of the students think that school is over. So if we move to this half-day schedule and make it mandatory for students to come to school and take that final exam, we will see increases in our attendance rates. We had like two or three schools last year who were above there, who, who would meet that dusty goal, but when the last week of school came around and kind of moved those, moved those schools off of that list. Also, another issue, when you are a high school principal and administrator, all teachers want to go to the graduation. You might have a student whose graduation that was your best student in ninth grade, and sometimes there's some hard feelings around who can go to graduation and who can't. We move to this half-day schedule, everybody in those buildings who have that 1:30 graduation time will be able to go and see the students that they taught graduate. We talked about attendance, we receive funding for attendance. If, if, if we meet our ADA goal, we'll receive a million dollars, which will be a big help to the system. Also accountability for grad, for attendance, if we, if we move to this, we should increase our numbers, which will help us reach our goal for our 90/90 attendance rate. Our potential concerns would be transportation. We've met with Linda and her amazing team, as Mr. Abarka likes to say. They said that they, we know we won't have any issues with transportation, we've already worked that out, so all the midday routes will be efficient, and the graduation buses and students will get to school one time and leave one time. Also, our lunch crew said that that won't be an issue, we'll have bag lunches and also lunches that will be prepared just for that final three days. We had surveys that we sent out to parents first. We had multiple questions. The first question was, please tell us who you are. If you look up here, we had 20% of the people who responded who were parents, 70% who were teachers, and the rest were other. We, we had a low participation rate, but that's something that's normal when you have a survey. So our informational tech team is working on making where when you log on to your computer, you kind of have to take a survey, because I know myself, I don't like to take surveys when I see them on, online. Okay, will the half-day option allow more students time to prepare for final exams? As you see, 81.6% strongly agreed. Would the half-day option allow students to participate in graduation ceremonies? We have our graduation ceremony, we have bands that play, we have people in the chorus that play. Sometimes if you're in the ninth or 10th grade and you're in the chorus, you have to still miss school, so this will allow everybody to participate and not to miss any school. If you look at the survey results, 85% of the people who took the survey thought that this would be a great idea. So the survey results for students, you look at our different schools, this is the participation rate. Lincoln had the highest participation rate, but they also had the most students and also the most seniors who we feel were the ones who responded the most. Okay, the question posed to students, would a half-day option help you prepare for final exams? If you look at the numbers, 94% of them said yes, that's enough for me, I mean, that's, okay. How likely will you, how likely is it that you will come to school if the school day is changed to half-day? Very likely. If you have mandated, mandated final exams, that will make you have to come to school. Any questions?
Statistically significant enough. Statistically significant enough.
Yes, yes.
Are there any questions on this request that's been put before us? Seeing no questions. Dr. Bedell, are you asking the Board to take any formal action this evening?
Yes. Yes, because it does require the vote of the Board because of the, the set, the change in the calendar in terms of going from a full day to a half-day.
So the item before us this evening is to support the recommendation of the administration for, for the early dismissal plan for high school students that has been presented. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, the Secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Mansur?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell for the next item.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Board. We think that this is a, a good thing, and it's something that's, that's been done in, in the school districts I've worked in, and I could tell you, last year, my daughter was a junior, she had to go and perform at the commencement. But I know for other kids who didn't have a late commencement, that 90/90 is an absolute. So there's no excuses that's going to allow for you to say, you know, you can make up the 90 minutes, I mean, that being in class 90% of the time. If you're absent, and if we have students who have to leave, and they miss that last period of the day, on 90/90, it's the same thing as them having a zero for the day, because there's no excuse that can make that up. So this will significantly help us, in, you know, it will significantly help us. So I just want to thank you all for that, and thank our team for doing their full due diligence on this. We will at this time bring Mr. Garrett Webster up, who will conduct an update to you all on our enrollment and our recruitment update, and we'll have several other individuals from the Communications Department that will come up and also present.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, appreciate your time this evening. Want to give you a quick update on where we are with our enrollment and our recruitment efforts for Kansas City Public Schools. Right now, we'll just take a look at our current enrollment. I want to just point out that our numbers right now are preliminary, as we are cleaning up our data, getting it ready for state reporting, and so this is our preliminary data. You will receive some updated data within the coming weeks when everything has been cleaned and scrubbed and is nice and shiny. So right now, we're looking at our current enrollment, SY 20 versus our SY 19 enrollment, and this is count day enrollment. You'll notice that we have an increase in our enrollment, which is a good thing. So we're up about 1.6% from last year, 227 students. You also notice that 12 schools had a decrease in their enrollment from last year, 16 schools had an increase of the enrollment. Four schools stayed about the same. I know there, one of your questions will be, you know, why are we showing some schools that are having a decrease? And please keep in mind that the decrease and the numbers that you're looking at are count day numbers. And so if we look at a lot of these schools that have a decrease, we'll see, and we've had, we have trends that show that those schools actually end the year with higher numbers. And so right now, we're just looking at numbers from count day to count day, not end of the year to end of the year. All right. As we look at our SY 20 transfers out of school, again, preliminary numbers for our transfers out of KCPS, we'll see that 18% of our students are, of students are going to another Kansas City Public School. Of the students who left the district, 33% went to a nearby Missouri public district. So those include, the high numbers are Independence, Hickman Mills, as well as Raytown School Districts. And then 37% went to a neighboring charter school, and about half of those went to Guadalupe, Frontier, Hogan, or Kaufman Schools. As we continue to look at our transfers, just kind of looking at them over a graph over the last three years, we'll notice that our numbers for our students transferring to charters is dropping, and it is continuing to decrease. And then our numbers for students going to Missouri public schools has stayed about the same over the last year, and nearby districts, within our district, the numbers are, are really staying about the same. So proportionally, the transfers out were consistent, and the charters have shrunk. Where do students go when they leave Kansas City Public Schools? This chart here really shows you just the trend over the last four years in which where the students are going. We'll see that we had a continuous decline over the last five years of our transfers out of Kansas City Public Schools. Transfers to charters, to nearby districts have about, they're about evened out in the recent years, and our transfers out of state have remained fairly consistent. Just to kind of show you this, the same numbers of students and transfers, we broke it out proportionally and gave you some percentages. In terms of the, based on the enrollments and the number of enrollments per year, this graph shows you proportionally the percentage of transfers based on the number of enrollments. All right. SY 20 transfers out of Kansas City Public Schools, and this is really based on, the last time I met with you, there was a question by Mr. Hogan, hello, Mr. Hogan, regarding the demographics of our transfers, and so we wanted to make sure that we had this available for you in our report this time. And so this really breaks down the demographics, the racial demographics of our students transferring out of Kansas City Public Schools. Hispanic students account for about 32% of our transfers to charters, and about 18% to our suburban districts. Our, our black African-American students account for about 54% to charters, and 61% of those transfers to our suburban districts. And our white or other stu, and other students account for about 14% to transfers to charters, and 21% transfer to our suburban districts. All right. Enrollment for SY 2021, it is time again to begin our enrollment. Even though we just started school a few weeks ago, we're already looking, we're looking to start school for next year. So let's get started. All right, KCPS enrollment, what do we have going on? Just kind of tell you a little bit about our enrollment process, what it looks like. Our application process is an enrollment as well as a registration process. It will open on December the 5th at 6:30 a.m. Our applicants and students and parents will be asked to provide all their needed documents in order to register. And so that means that once they've completed everything, and everything is approved, they'll actually be able to start school in August. Our system is a first-come, first-served, it is not a lottery system. They'll be able to apply and register for up to four schools at the same time. They won't have to do multiple applications, everything's all-in-one. March 2nd, 2020 will actually notify all of our qualified applicants of their acceptance at their qualified schools. At the same time, if we have more applicants than we have seats available, parents will be notified of their waitlist notification. Once parents have accepted their seat, they're done. And it's really turned over to our schools at that point to notify our families about their student orientation, any summer events that they have going on, and really getting students and parents ready to start school in August, building those relationships. And that's really what we want to get to, is, you know, the, the enrollment piece is, is the paperwork, it's, it's the, it's the dirty job of what we have to get done, of just getting all the necessary information in. But the really fun thing is for our schools to be able to build the relationships, get students ready for school so that they can learn, and so that we can get families engaged. So when we look at kind of why we're doing what we're doing, we understand that the Charter Common App is going to open on November 9th, ours is going to open on December the 5th. So a month later, how does that affect us? It doesn't. We'll open up on the 5th, our decision-making will go out on March 2nd. Between March 2nd and the start of school, our schools will have the opportunity, as I said, to cultivate their relationships with their parents, families, new students, and of course, our returning students. What I want you to keep in mind is the finish line is not when a student or parent completes the application. It's not the finish line, that is only the beginning. The finish line is really the first day of school, and no, no school can count a student until they've actually come in, sat down in a seat, and they've been taking attendance. And so the finish line is really in August 2020, which is why opening our application December 5th is the right thing to do for our families and for our community. So we'll talk about that a little bit more, really, why is it the best thing to do? Why is it best for KCPS as a system? It gives us time to promote the individual schools, our signature schools, our neighborhood schools. It gives us time to saturate our market. Ms. Lynn Gearing will come up in a little bit here and tell you all about the amazing marketing plan that her and her team have put together. It allows us time and our message to be separate and distinct from charter schools and other schools within our area. And so what that means is, in the month of November, we're going to have people, we're going to have, we'll have schools that'll be advertising, "Come to my school, come to my school." And everybody is going to be talking, saying the same thing at the same time. What this is going to allow us to do, it'll give us some space in the newspapers, airtime on the radio, and social media to allow our message to be able to penetrate and saturate the market. Many signature schools require grades, attendance, discipline records. And so opening in December gives us, provides access to that current information. What that means is our students that are applying have been in school for a number of months. They've actually finished a quarter in school, they have grades. They're almost done with an entire semester. And so therefore, the information that our, some of our schools need will be that much more prevalent. It also allows our schools time to focus on building relationships, can't stress that enough, at our city school fair. So the city school fair is coming up, November the 9th, as we stated. And what we don't want our, our schools to be focused on is getting parents to enroll or to complete an application at the school fair. We really want that to be an opportunity for relationship building, for learning about the needs and the wants of parents and their families, because each student is different. And so that gives our schools an opportunity to build those relationships. Why is it best for our parents, December 5th? It's best for our parents because it gives them time to collect the documents that we talked about that they needed. So now's the time where we're letting them know, here's what you need, here's what you may need to get from your previous school. Some parents, if they're applying to a school that, let's just say, 6th grade at Lincoln, they may need to get, or 7th grade, they may need to get records from two previous schools. They may need to get it from their 6th grade school and a 5th grade school. And so it allows them time to get those records. It relieves the stress of having to complete two applications, complete the KCPS application and the Charter Common App application at the same time or on the same day. We already know the stress of finding a good school for our students is, and for our parents, can be stressful for many parents. And we want to try to alleviate that as best we can. So our goal is to really reduce the stress by closing the gap between the enrollment and seat offer time, taking it from three months in our case, whereas four months with the Common App. All right, so big takeaways. All decisions are made in March in terms of what seats are offered. The finish line is the first day of school, so we know that the application is not the end. And recruitment requires time and relationship building. So what are our action steps? At our city school fair, all of our schools will have a digital entrance form. So as they're building those relationships, parents that say, "I'm really interested in your school, I want to find out more", they'll be able to give them their information, and it'll be put into a digital format where they'll be able to collect that. We'll have a short video that would explain the signature enrollment process. So we're working with our communications team on really, what do you need to enroll? What is the process? What does it look like? We understand that in our previous open enrollment, there were some challenges with some of our parents. And so we've heard our parents, we've heard their feedback from their surveys, and so we're looking to address those moving forward. We have our marketing campaign rollout, which I said, Ms. Gearing is going to talk about here in a bit. And signature schools are going to be encouraged to host an event during this time between the city school fair and December 20th. So whether that's an open house, whether that's a school tour, or a shadow day, we want them to open their doors to the community. So big takeaways on dates. December 5th is our open enrollment process. Again, it's going to be pre-K through 12th grade. All neighborhood schools, all signature schools. The only enrollment we will not be accepting is Head Start. Head Start is run through Mark, and they control the enrollment process for that. And so that will start in March. And so we'll have pre-K through 12th, neighborhood and signature. December 7th will be our first date for our Lincoln testing for students outside of our district. Students within our district will be able to take the iReady test up to, they'll take it at least three times that we give it to them. But in our schools, we actually allow them to take it unlimited times, unlimited. February 14th is where the deadline for our first notification pool. Everyone that applies by the 14th will get a notification on March 2nd as to acceptance or waitlist. March 13th is the deadline for our parents to either accept that seat that they were offered, or to decline that seat. All right, so at this time, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Denise Snell, who is our admissions recruiter. And she is doing a fantastic job. Really excited to have her on board, as she is actually, you know, helping us create a system to help our schools and our district. Denise?
Thank you. Good evening. I am very excited to be here, because I'm excited about what's happening in recruitment. We are, have been given the opportunity to showcase the great things that are happening in our district. So we are currently working on two initiatives that highlight our schools and utilize our biggest cheerleaders in the community. So that takes us to our first initiative, which is our ambassador program. So the purpose of our ambassador program is to build a sustainable system of recruitment teams within each pilot school. So this year, we have a group of participating pilot schools, and you can see them listed here. Benjamin Banneker, Carver Dual Language, Faxin, Hill Cook, Lincoln Middle, Lincoln High, and Paseo. I would like to note that there was a larger cohort of schools chosen, but the schools that were selected were selected because they were able to send a lead ambassador to the mandatory one-day training that we had. On September 13th, we have the opportunity to train our lead ambassadors from each of our pilot schools. So our pilot schools are currently recruiting students, staff, and parents, and alumni to participate in the ambassador program. And each one of those ambassador applications can be done online. They've been sent links, and those links have been sent out. Our goal is to have our teams chosen and training for parents, students, and alumni by November 2nd. Our next steps for the ambassador program, once our ambassadors are selected, is to train the new recruitment teams. And the recruitment teams will be, again, parents, students, and alumnis, alumni per school. And our teams will be trained and to be utilized during things like shadow days, school tours, the city school fair on November 9th. And our goal, again, for having the training by November 2nd, is to be able to train our ambassadors to participate in the city school fair, which gives our school staffs a break, essentially. And it gives our parents, our alumni, and our students the opportunity to get out and to talk to the community and give community a firsthand opportunity to hear what's going on in our schools from parents and from students. All of our school tours and shadow days will now be accessible through Eventbrite. So what this does is this gives a centralized location for people to be able to go out to the KCPS, Eventbrite page, essentially, and find all of our shadow days and all of our school tours in one place. Our next initiative is our Catch the Bus initiative, our school tours. So what our school tours are doing is giving community, parents, and even some of our board members the opportunity to get inside of schools. So in the past, and currently still, we have the opportunity to participate with Show Me KC schools and do tours. They showcase at least two of our schools on each one of their tours. For us doing our own, our own tours, what that helps us do is, number one, we can control our narrative. You all, folks, get to see what's going on in our schools. They get to see four of our schools instead of two of our schools. So it gives us a broader, it gives people the opportunity to see a broader spectrum of our schools. By implementing, actually, let me, let me move on. You see here the dates. We've already held two of our school tours. We did a tour on September 17th, and you can see the schools there where we visited. And then we also did a tour on October 8th, and you can see the schools there. We try during our tours to get a good mix of neighborhood schools and signature schools. So we have our pre-kindergarten tours that's coming up, because we know that our early childhood educators are instrumental in helping our parents choose elementary schools for their students. We are going to do a tour that is going to be focused on early childhood educators and parents who have students in early childhood centers that will be heading into kindergarten. So on November 20th, we have a tour that is going to visit only elementary schools. We'll see Banneker, African Center College Prep, Faxin Elementary, and James Elementary on that day. And then for our centers, Richardson and Woodland, our Head Start centers. In December 2019, we will be putting together a tour specifically for them. So we are working with their school leadership to notify or to look for which schools their parents would like to see. And we're going to get all of that put together and give them four schools to visit, just put together especially for them. So on our previous tours that we've had this year, again, we're going to have five in total. Our strategy has been to get community members to see, get inside, and be able to advocate for all the great things happening in our schools. So we know that 24% of our applicants, how do parents learn about KCPS schools? A lot of that is word of mouth. And so having the opportunity to get parents, community members, and advocates inside of the schools so they can see what's happening, gives us, our parents are our cheerleaders, right? Our community is our cheerleaders. And so that is the, one of the reasons that we are doing these school tours. So on our September 17th, our first school tour, 100% of our participants rated the school tour as excellent. On our October 9th tour, which was our second tour, 91% of our participants rated the tour as excellent, and 9% rated the tour as good. 30% of our school tours to date have been, or have identified themselves as parents. The rest have identified themselves as community members, elected officials, board members. And we've even had people who sit on the boards of early childhood learning centers participate as well, so they can understand what's going on. I want to take time real quick to give a shout out to two of our board members. If you look at these pictures, we have Mr. Wasserstrom and Mr. Abarka. Did I say it right? Yeah, right, Mr. Abarka, who both participated in our school tours. Here we have, if you see these pictures, we have our students with Carver Dual Language, and also our student ambassadors at our Southeast tour, who did an excellent job showcasing their school, talking about their experiences, and showing us through some of, even some of their classrooms. So... Got a couple what? Yes, 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 yes. We are getting our student representatives linked up with our school board members so they can learn from you all. Sounds good. Real world, real world learning. Okay. So what do folks say about the tours? Everybody who comes on our school tours gets the opportunity to turn in an evaluation. So I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the things that people are saying that they like about our school tours. So they like seeing and hearing so many positive vibes. They love being able to take a look inside of the classrooms. They like Dr. Bedell's intro. So Dr. Bedell has had the opportunity to come down and say a welcome to some of our guests, or to all of our guests, actually. They like, let's see, they enjoyed seeing how the schools respond to their particular community and meet them where they are. It is clear that everyone, specifically the principals, are passionate about what they are doing. They enjoyed Pitcher and Central High principals, and they really enjoyed the student ambassadors that were represented with Carver and Central High School. And the last thing is, it's wonderful to see such engaged teachers, admin, and students in each of the schools. And again, these comments were taken directly from our evaluation forms. Thank you. And are there any questions?
Questions, Mr. Abarka?
Yeah, I have one for Garrett back, a few slides now, it looks like 41. Oh, good call, sorry. All right, so on page 41, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. I'll let you guys get back to it. So on the green line, does this include kids who've completely transferred out of KCPS total? Because it seems like you're saying there are 1,500 students who are no longer with us completely to...
That's correct.
Okay.
Transfer completely out of our school system.
Okay, and then broken down, gotcha. All right, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Abarka, I'd like to make one comment regarding these numbers. So these numbers, clearly, you know, 1,500 is a high number. The way the state works is if you leave, if you end the school year last year with us, you are rolled up with us this year, and you are counted as a transfer on the first day of school this year if you didn't show up, if you ended the school year last year with us. So those students who didn't return with us, from 5th to 6th grade, are counted as transfers on the first day of school this year. Thank you.
Okay, I have, starting on the first slide, this one. Yep. First off, thank you for the presentation. Very, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I understand that these are count day numbers, and that you indicated that newer, more finite numbers will be coming. So what I wanted to say was, was of interest to me on this was the great shifts in big green, where you have double-digit gain, and big red, where you have double-digit dip. And I am specifically interested, since we'll get this at another point in time, in, interested to see, are these increases and decreases, do we know if they are driven by specific grades within those elementaries, or those middles, or even those high schools? So that is interesting information as a, I think, to understand what's going on. And the other thing I thought that would be very interesting to see patterns is, not to make this too difficult, but see this in feeder patterns, elementary, middle to high, and where the green and yellow kind of correspond, you might see something there, as, as well as grouped by elementary, middle, and high. So what I'm looking for is patterns in this data, essentially. So you don't have to answer that now, I'm just, that's...
I'm taking some notes.
Taking some notes. So, and there's going to be a theme here, just so you know. The next page, same thing, where Manny was seeing this. Well, I think it's important to understand what's going on. And that is, this would also, these transfer, this, this is overall, correct? These are everybody lumped together?
Correct.
Could we see the same slide, but just for elementary, middle, and high, to see those patterns? Can I keep going?
Please.
I have a lot. That's why I was asking, are we waiting to the end? Okay, so on page 42, the next slide, I just, so that I can understand what's going on here. Non-Mo public. Is that Kansas?
No, so non-Missouri public means, let's say, a student transferred to Kearney, or if a student transferred to St. Louis, if they moved outside of Kansas City. I'm sorry, non-Mo public, I apologize. That's, that's, that's everything outside of Missouri, that's a public school. So even if the student transferred to New Mexico, Albuquerque, they could be in this as well.
I guess my point is, I'm very interested to find out how much of that is Kansas. And the reason being, nearby district and what percent of this is Kansas is a very interesting combined number to me. That is people leaving to go right next door to us. Well, I don't know that we have that number, but, and again, back to transfers in elementary, middle, high. Okay, that all stopped.
Dr. Jones, please.
I just have one question for now, which is, how, it must be incredible balance that you have to push or hold as you push in and recruit and highlight the signature schools. But what does this mean for the neighborhood schools? How do you maintain that balance between making sure that the signature schools don't become like, don't appear to be to the public that this is the only good place to go? So I just, I'm curious to...
Excellent question. That will be answered by Ms. Gearing in her presentation here in just a moment. Great question.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
From all this studying that you've done, have you come up with any ideas that if we wanted to see a growth in student enrollment of something like 10 or 15%, how would shape a marketing campaign to get more kids into KCPS?
So let me make sure I understand your question, Mr. Wasserstrom. If we want to see an... If we want to see an increase in enrollment of 10% or 15%, what would a marketing strategy look like?
Yeah, I mean, what pockets would you go after?
When you say pockets, can you elaborate a little bit?
Go to parochial schools and say we're going to pick off some parochial kids? Would you go to charters and say we're going to get back some charters? I mean.
Sure, okay, I understand your question. And so really, you know, the low-hanging fruit in this instance is our students that reside in our district because we have, the only students that can attend our schools are students that reside in our district. And so the low-hanging fruit will be students that reside in our district that do not attend our schools. And so we're looking at the 20-plus thousand students that attend our charter schools. So we know where students are.
Ms. Cortez?
I did it. Sorry. By the end, by the end of this term, I'll figure out how to use the microphone. The, I think I've shared most of my questions in advance, so as you're going through Ms. Wolfsey's questions as well, I do think it's really valuable to be able to see the cohort data, but also to see, you know, grade by grade, as well as grouped elementary, middle, high school. But also, kind of, to give context, what the capacity of the buildings that we're showing the enrollment numbers for are. So, as you're, as you're putting together all of this information, that would be really helpful.
Absolutely, and we, we did get your request, and we're going to work on that. And you'll see many of your requests in the, in a board update, and so we're going to be working on those. Didn't have enough time to get them for you tonight, but thank you for your feedback, we appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Webster. I have a few questions, some maybe you don't have to answer this evening, but I'm, I'm very struck on slide 40 about some of the double-digit percentage declines, particularly you see Gladstone, King Elementary, Longfellow, where you see some very strong declines. Now, I know what you've just said to us is, we might anticipate, we, we are likely, based on past history, prior history, to see rebounding in enrollment in those. But is that, have you seen that level of decline in the past? And you may not be able to answer that tonight, but would you, would, can you describe for me if not, if you can't tonight in a future packet, if that's standard or if there's something unusual in that, in that percentage change?
What I'll tell you is, what you're seeing is not unusual. And so what Kansas City Public Schools experience, experiences every year is we experience enrollments each and every day from students who, just, even just this week, my team is enrolling students who have never been in school this school year. So there are parents who are still bringing their students to school, their student has never been in school, never attended one day. I know, it's hard to believe, it's October, it's almost Thanksgiving, and their students have not been to school, not one day. And so we'll, we'll see parents continue to bring their students in to enroll throughout the year. To, to give you some specifics, Longfellow last year saw a 21% increase from count day to the last day of school in their enrollment. Faxton was a 43% increase enrollment from the first day of school to the last day of school. So the unfortunate fact is, yes, this is normal for us, and we have to continue to do, you know, we've already done a fabulous job, I think, with our communications and our, with our communications and marketing, really getting the word out about putting your students in school, getting enrolled in school. We just have to continue to beat that drum. The education is the answer, getting enrolled early. But yes, we, we will see these numbers increase.
And then, I, I know, I appreciate what you've said on slide 46 about the enrollment process when, I'm pleased to see that, that there is a commitment then, if I'm reading that slide, that by March 2nd, qualified applicants will absolutely have been notified of their acceptance.
That is correct.
And then, but you said then, the next step, really, at that point, if, is schools to really make that connection? Have we set expectations? I don't know if this is a question for Dr. Bedell or, or for you. Have we created any kind of expectation for schools regarding how quickly they should make any kind of personal outreach to those families? So that, I love that there's a, a hard intent to notify on March 2nd, but I'm wondering, we're not going to leave parents sort of with no communication until August 1st?
Correct, and that's really a part of our recruitment efforts, and so Ms. Snell is working on that. In terms of really putting together, we talked about a sustainable system, and a sustainable system of relationship building. And so the relationship building for the school, again, begins after the acceptance March 2nd. And so we're working with our pilot schools and be working with all of our schools in terms of what does that look like? What are some things that we can do to start building that relationship in March, between March and August?
Ms. Wolfsey, did you have additional?
Don't laugh. So I'm, I'm going to build on what you just said. What I, I applaud your decision, maybe to give parents more time on December 5th versus the November 9th. One of the things, though, that I think I would caution you on, or caution us on, is that while you pointed out, you know, Ms. Mansour, that March 2nd, you know, they know that they've been accepted truly. Parents are going to be marketed and marketed hard between November 9th and, you know, whenever our date is, and then the following decision date. And so, schools can't wait until then. I mean, they literally need to make sure that they are constantly reaching out to families and making sure they're aware of events that they can come. If you're looking at schools as a parent, what you're looking to really kind of figure out before you actually have to make that decision, what does the climate and culture of that school feel like? And as many opportunities as I can take on my own, as a parent with my child, to either come see your holiday program, you know, drop in on some other this or that event, my question, I think, one of a couple of slides over, is that I liked in the ambassador program that, or I think it started on November 9th at the fair, that we're going to create a digital interest form. Those are your tickle list or whatever, do you remember?
Oh, yes, right.
So those are the folks that you want to make sure you're constantly in touch with because chances are, they're going to be looking at multiple options. And what we really want to do is pull them in to see our wonderful schools that we have, neighborhood schools, like at the top of the list, and get them a chance to come and touch and feel a school event or something like that because I think that is what truly sells parents on schools.
Can I say something?
Yes.
You're absolutely right.
I'm a parent.
I know you hear that all the time.
You and I are parents, we know. So, well, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, one last major question, the rest I'll just stick in an email. On the enrollment page, is it, because I want this to be, so if I am a parent and I live in a boundary of a neighborhood school, if I move into that boundary, either in the middle of a school year or right now where I'm going ready, I live in that boundary and it's time for me to make my decision, I actually choose to do neighborhood schools. Everybody that lives in a neighborhood school boundary is guaranteed the ability to enroll in that school. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we do not put caps on neighborhood schools.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have part two of this presentation, correct?
Oh, yes, there's more. We'll get you caught up here, all right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, good evening, Board. I'm Lynn Garing. I am in charge of the enrollment marketing for our school district and our individual schools. So as Mr. Webster indicated, we do have a marketing plan together for the school year. And so essentially, we're very cyclical as a school district. And I'd like to remind, marketing isn't just advertising. Marketing are many pieces of the overall puzzle. So whether it's press, public relations, to advertising, to recruiting, to enrollment department, to how you're greeted when you walk in the door of a school. What does the school look like? What are, what are our employees? How do they act whenever they're out and about, maybe they have a shirt on? All of those things play a role in the overall marketing scheme of things. So as we build a marketing campaign strategy, it's looking at all those different things and finding ways to make sure that we are touching as, and being very thoughtful and purposeful in our actions, and making sure that we are sending a very clear and consistent message, great things are happening at all of our schools, all of our schools. So talking about marketing campaigns, as I mentioned, we're very cyclical. So over the summer, we really focus in on neighborhood school marketing, making sure that we're really letting people know neighborhood schools are there, what are the great things happening with them. This past year, we had entered into an agreement with Scripps Advertising, and so we promoted Southeast, we promoted all of our, all of our high schools, all of our middle schools. We also went into advertising with our, our neighborhood elementary schools. And then, we did a big push for the enrollment fair. And if you were here for the enrollment fair, you would have seen a very long line, and it was very encouraging because we had parents actually bringing their kids to the first day of school. Ooh, that was the goal. In addition, we did back-to-school promotions as well. We're getting ready to knock, to start the signature school campaign. That will run about two months, maybe a little less, depending on how things go. After that, we're going to kick off preschool campaign, that'll probably go about three months. We're going to see how things roll, maybe extend it as we can, as we can. We'll go into Quest Summer School Campaign, that'll run about two months. And then we're going to go back into Neighborhood School Campaign. That's going to take four to five months. So our big push for that, as we talk about neighborhood schools, is making sure we're being very strategic and telling every school's great story. What are the great things happening there? In addition, we have smaller special campaigns, attendance awareness, helping us grow and let our, our, our students and our parents know it's important to come to school every day. In addition, Early College Academy, pushing that, making sure that we're building awareness from that perspective, as well as the great things happening at Manual Career and Tech. So some of the strategies that we have going on include public relations. So I'm going to introduce Ray Wykel.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, good evening, Board, how are you all tonight? So I am very excited about going into our marketing campaigns that Lynn outlined for the coming school year. Kansas City Public Schools grows students. That's one of the coolest things to come out of our APR data. It's very quantifiable. If you send your student to our schools, that student is going to be better than they were at the start of the year, when they started coming to our class. It's like the $6 million man. They're going to be better, they're going to be stronger, they're going to be prepared to go to that next level. That's what our schools do. Amazing things are happening every single day. My job is to identify those super-specific, very compelling stories that are happening, happening in our schools and in our classrooms, and to share those stories through both earned media and owned media. So that's what I'm going to be doing this year, moving in through all of these campaigns, one after another, but it's a, it's a constant process. So that's what I'm going to be doing, and I'm going to pass it back to Lynn.
As I mentioned, recruiting is very specific and very purposeful as well. I'm very excited that we have Danisha on board and that she has her new ambassador program and the school tours happening. So part of the recruiting piece includes the school tours. It's community events, getting out there, making sure that we are boots on the ground and showcasing the great things that we have to offer. It's open houses, it's also prospect drip marketing campaigns, which I believe you mentioned. So as we do build these lead lists, before, we would go out, we'd shake hands, we'd kiss babies, we start building relationships, but we never did anything to follow up. Now we're taking it to the next level. We've built a really good foundation in our marketing the past two years. Now we're finding additional ways of how do we become purposeful as we move forward. So developing a drip marketing campaign, so we continue to reach out to these folks, making sure that we are talking and staying engaged with our principals, guiding them to have the school tours, open houses, invite those parents out, continuing to find those ways that we can market to them in more ways than just shaking their hand. In addition, we have advertising, and that's the pretty stuff. It's, I enjoy my job, I enjoy my job a whole lot. We're going to continue our enrollkc.org website. In case you haven't seen it, it is a one-stop shop. We have it designed in such a fashion that it is a very strong call to action. You go, you get the basic information that you need, and you either click to learn more, or you enroll. One of the two things. It's been very effective as we look at marketing ourselves. In addition, we're going to continue with our radio coverage. All of our marketing for, whether it's signature schools, kindergarten, neighborhood schools, et cetera, it's built to the individual schools themselves. I'm very strategic, I tell Lynn on a regular basis, I treat this money like it's mine, and I'm very cost-conscious. So I make sure that we're spending our money very wisely as we go along. In addition, we'll be doing, continuing to do newspapers, making sure we're reading, meeting those families who still read the newspaper, get their information there. We're going to continue and expand our billboards, those have been very effective. And as part of that, we have coordinated geo-fenced ads that go along with the billboards. So if you see a billboard and say it's for, we actually have some still out for Longfellow. If you, you see it and you stay within that two-mile radius, you get on your phone and you go to go play Candy Crush, that little ad pops up, it's going to be a Longfellow ad. So we're making sure that we stay very consistent and targeted from that perspective as well. We have, we'll be doing social media, not only posts, but our, our sponsored ads, as well as online ads, direct mail. Direct mail does still work, but we're very, again, being very strategic with how we're doing it. And then this year, expanding for signature schools, include TV commercials, on-air interviews, and, and doing some digital media ads. I don't want to bore you with too much, and I wanted to talk fast because I know you guys want to go home. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions, Ms. Wolfsey?
Thank you very much for the presentation. So I am curious, because this looks like a lot. What is the overall budget for the campaign for the year?
We have a budget of $202,000 for the year.
And can you kind of explain how you've decided to break that up?
Yeah, we have it built, it's actually three key pieces. The first piece is signature school, second piece is kindergarten marketing, and then the third piece is neighborhood school marketing.
So is it a third, a third, a third?
No, it's not, we actually spend more money on neighborhood marketing.
Okay.
I can't give you exact numbers.
I was going to say, in the Friday update, if you don't mind just showing us exactly how those dollars are broken out towards the strategies, I'd like to see that. Go ahead.
I can provide some, a couple of figures for you.
You can do it in the Friday update, because that way, because I know there'll be other questions.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'd like to give my colleague Nate a chance, and then I'll come, come back down the line. Your question? Yeah, please stand up.
Can, well, this is a little bit of a follow-up on Ms. Wolfsey's question, and maybe this was answered, so I apologize, it was a little difficult for me to hear. On, on that marketing campaign budget, does that include salaries, or is that all actual campaign budget?
That is actual advertising monies. That does, that does not include salaries.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Nate?
Thank you for providing clarity on the breakdown between neighborhood and signature spending. I'm happy to see that there is, you know, emphasis on neighborhood schools as well. This, the question I have is about, how do we go about, you know, keeping everything positive, but at the same time helping to dispel some of the myths in the community? So, not, and not even, I won't even use the word myths, I would say misinformation. So I still regularly get emails from people whose kids are enrolled at charter schools, but who think that we, that they are affiliated with KCPS. And then to hone in on something Ray said about the growth numbers being really positive for Kansas City, just on a whim, because I felt like doing it, I looked at the growth scores or some other, some of the same places that, that Garrett mentioned earlier as to where our students go, and their growth scores were negative. And so I really like that aspect of really focusing on that. I don't really have a question about that part, but I just wonder, how do we, without seeming to disparage charters, how do we just clarify? Like, they might tell you they're percentage proficient, but look more closely than that. I just, that's something I'm, I don't have an answer for, but I'm just wondering if you have thought about that.
Yes, we have, we think of. We think of it on a regular basis. Messaging is very key for us. We go through and look, especially for neighborhood schools, because I think that's where we really see it. We ran a billboard campaign last, this past spring, that where some of our elementary schools that had capacity and were doing excellent in the APR scores, we actually, our message was nurturing, inspiring, outperforming local area charter schools. Because we did the numbers in the local area charter schools around them, they were outperforming them. So sometimes you kind of have to just spell it out. But for the most part, in addition to that, we are very cognizant of, as we tell those stories, whether it's we're sharing a good story for a student, we're sharing a good story for staff members, things along that lines, we make sure that we showcase those online. Our video team is phenomenal, making sure that we're showcasing the, we have a Teachers' Change Lives video program that's going now, making sure we're really kind of hitting them everywhere that they live. So we continue to build that positive newsworthy media that's happening. In addition, with the recruiters, that's a big piece too, because as we build that team of recruiters that are out there saying great things about us as well, that's just going to keep building.
Lynn, I'll add, from a public relations perspective, we're very proud to work for a public school system where we take transparency and honesty and openness seriously. These are core values for our team. And we are going to focus 99% of our efforts on telling positive stories about our classrooms and our students. But where we see obfuscation or misinformation, we will confront that. We will be tiger parents in that regard about that, and we will defend our schools, and we will make sure that the truth is shared.
No. I have a question, then I can circle back. I'm guessing my colleague, Ms. Wolfsey, has seven more, so let me just get mine in real quickly. Thank you, you know, for doing this, and I appreciate the intentionality. I don't know if this is a question that I necessarily would request that you answer today, but I'm really interested in the marketing research and wanting to know what tools or mechanisms do we use to test some of the messages we're using? You did use an example that I think was interesting about the billboard campaign in an area where there was a high-performing school. When I think about looking at Mr. Webster's enrollment data and some of the population outflow that we're seeing, the Latino population outflow and African-American population outflow, which that percentage had a high proportion going to nearby Missouri suburban schools. I'm wondering if we could, what's our process, or if you're thinking about market research that would help you understand the kinds of messages, succinct messaging, that might grab somebody's attention or cause them to re, you know, pause and rethink what they understand about KCPS?
So we have the data insight that was done back in 2015 that we still use as a point of reference. In addition, I'm a talker, I don't know if anybody knows that or not, but I like to go and visit with families, and as part of that, I do ask families on a regular basis of wide diversity, of what message resounds with them, what do they need to know, and honestly, why are you here? Why do you choose the school you choose? That was actually, that's actually part of our campaign this year, of I chose my school because, and that's kind of the campaign we're building off of. But we have been talking about what can we do to actually get a more formal research as far as what messaging should look like, what resounds, what doesn't. When we go and we do messaging in the Northeast Side, in a highly Latino area, we actually do it in Spanish. So we make sure that it's not just we're throwing up an English billboard, we're putting up a Spanish billboard. So just trying to find ways that we can stay very consistent. And ideally, I'm a marketer, I love marketing and research, I don't get excited about numbers until it's research. And so that is one of our, continue to build on the foundation. I'm living with a pretty limited budget for everything that we're doing. And so eventually, I think next year, I really want to put into our budget that we do some market research specifically for that.
And I will add, we are actually engaging in our Hanover survey project that is launching as of now, and we will be promoting that out. It is live, and we will be promoting that out to our stakeholders, and that will be gathering some very valuable information that we can use moving forward. And I will add philosophically, we're firm believers in continuous improvement. So we recognize that in the area of evaluation, in that research, planning, implementation, evaluation process that's required of marketing, that we're continually looking at new ways, better ways to do that evaluation process.
Additional, Mr. Wasserstrom?
What's the timeframe for the Hanover project?
Defer to Mr. Reynolds on that. The survey's been live for about 24 hours now. It did just go up, and we're anticipating a month to six weeks for it to be up, and then we'll have results right then.
Ms. Wolfsey?
So I want to ask a question about kind of pulling this all together, because we had the enrollment piece first. I assume that we have enrollment goals that you are then trying to hit through marketing campaigns, or that's the part that I eventually want to, I guess, tee up, is that the world should work in tandem, ideally, right? If we're trying to raise enrollment by X percent this year to next year, how do we do that? You know, and it's using things like data, research quantitative, but also qualitative market research to say, here's how we're going to target to go up here, here, and here. So my question, I know Lynn, Ms. Garen, you mentioned that you knew that the billboards were very effective. So my question would be, can you share, not here, but in the Friday packet, how you guys are measuring the effectiveness of what you've been doing and how it influenced this year's campaign based on what you learned last year on effectiveness? Because each year, I expect that we're trying to learn from what we did last year and what didn't work and what did, based on these were the goals, this is what we did with the campaign, this was the outcome, and here's how we're going to tweak it this year based on what we learned. So you don't have to answer that now, but in the future Friday update, that would be what I would be expecting to see.
I will say, it's very difficult to assign a value to a student that's enrolling. We do the post-after-enrollment survey of how did you hear about us from that perspective? So since we don't have them in a traditional customer relationship management system, so we can say we've talked to them, they saw this ad, whatever, and all the way through enrollment, we don't have that. We're finding ways to implement something along that lines. We don't have necessarily, I like to give you hard, this is, I am very confident with this, I can't give you other measurables, such as like the number of, how the number of applications have increased from one year to the next. I have those.
I don't expect this today, but what I'm trying to challenge us to be is, you've got to go in this area, we have to understand that we spend dollars, that we are spending dollars, we're actually moving the needle, and because we have, as Lynn explained, we have security dollars, we want to make sure that we're going exactly where we're going.
Ms. Wolfsey, we do have multiple anecdotal data points that when you line them all up, you know, they won't be able to say for sure this billboard caused me to enroll, like that definitive, yeah, that definitive isn't there, but number of applications, number of transfers, number of students not leaving. You know, we can line all of this anecdotal information up that will give you a general picture of the success of the marketing campaign, but also KCPS as a whole.
Go ahead.
You guys know I like to frame, so this is more of a comment than a question. Don't laugh, Manny. I just want to, I want you to know I support all of this, and I think that, you know, marketing to enroll, like my colleague has just stated, is very important to me as it is, I'm sure for everyone. I just want to make sure we remember that some of the exodus that we see, the 33% that leave the district and go to a neighboring district, not a charter but a neighboring district, that is a part of a much broader narrative in this community that has been going on for many years, and unfortunately, in the near future will probably continue. So it's not just like school performance, there's also a broader narrative of this is not the place you move to and stay, and if you leave, you've come up in the world. And so I know that's not true, I don't believe that, you know, I happily live where I live. But we have to remember that there's a large population of people in our community who have been told that if you live in a zip code with 64130s or 64128, you have a lower life expectancy. The Health Department has been telling us that for quite some time. So I say all that to say that this effort to show all of the great things that our school district is doing, all the momentum that we have, we're going to need the help of the community as well. So all of the people who push all the negative statistics about our community, they're going to have to also start sharing that hope and momentum as well, and not just highlighting the negative aspects, because there are some great things going on in our neighborhoods, the neighborhood school, but also the neighborhood as a whole, and there has been progress. So I'd just like to remind the people present and virtual that this is, that we don't operate in a vacuum. Like, we could spend a lot of money on marketing, but that won't necessarily improve enrollment if the broader narrative is that this is not a place you stay. So that's it.
Mr. Hogan has a...
Yeah, more of a comment. So I agree with Dr. Jones, and I think Ms. Wolfsey is spot-on as well. I think part of the story here is, before we go start to market to people, right, it's great to kind of know, hey, when we market to someone, they've received it, they believe in it, and all of those sort of things. But before you can really even market to people, you have to understand who those people are, right? You have to know what your message is to each one of them, because it's going to be different depending on who the stakeholder is that you're marketing to. And so we just need to make sure that we're making some of that sort of persona research into this before we ever spend 200 grand to market to people where messages may be completely off from the people that we're marketing to. So just something to kind of think about as you guys move forward.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all the comments and the questions, and I hope you hear too enthusiasm for this work. We believe in it, we want to be part of it and support you all in any way needed. So Dr. Bedell, I know we have additional presentations to proceed to the family engagement update.
Yes. Okay. Thank you all. And we thank you for the input, Board, on the work that we're trying to do around enrollment, recruitment, and marketing. So we will bring up Courtney Adams and Camilla Alvarez to give an update on our family engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. We wanted to start with a brief overview of our office and our philosophy. We look at our role as capacity builders to help schools partner more effectively with their families and to help families build their own capacity to better support their students' learning. We see family engagement not as solely our responsibility, but as a shared responsibility across the district, across staff, parents, family members, and the community. So some ways we're working to build that capacity at the family level and school capacity is through advocacy, training, and empowerment. We are interested in building family and student advocates, decision-makers, and collaborators. And one way to do that at the district level is through our District Advisory Committee, or our DAC, which advises and supports parents, parent organizations, the administration, and the school board. The DAC Executive Board has identified a few focus areas for the year, creating effective parent organizations, and that's through offering resources and training for parents and school staff interested in establishing, for the first time, their parent organizations or strengthening their existing parent leadership organizations, enhancing and/or expanding academics, athletics, and extracurriculars, which Mr. Burton spoke to at the beginning of the meeting, developing parent advocates for public education through informational meetings, trainings, and attending legislative sessions, which they did last year, and they will continue those initiatives this year. The DAC holds quarterly general body meetings and monthly subcommittee meetings to address those focus areas. The first general body meeting, some of you are in attendance, had record attendance with over 80 attendees, parents representing 19 schools and staff representing 31 schools. I think by far some of the best representation across the board that we've had at our District Advisory Committee meetings, at least since I've been here for the last year, which isn't saying much, I guess. We look forward to continuing to have strong representation across parents and staff at future meetings. At the school level, to empower more parents as advocates and decision-makers, we have our parent leadership organizations, those are our PTAs, our SACS, our PTOs. The DAC, along with our office, the Office of Family and Community Engagement, provides guidance, support, and technical assistance to those parent orgs, which can include taking them through the process of establishing a new organization, enhancing an already established organization, helping develop meeting agendas, meeting structure, format, outcomes, goals for the year. So far this year, we've worked with one school that's setting up a SAC at Banneker, and they're really excited and engaged already. We've also connected with several other schools who have expressed an interest and need support with either getting their organization established, recruiting parents, or becoming more active and engaged. Beyond that, we'll be targeting schools that have Title I parent engagement staff already or someone at the building level dedicated to family engagement to see what their goals are and what challenges they're facing and see how we can best support them. We're currently tracking parent organizations established at 30 schools, to include, again, SACS, PTAs, PTOs, and a few miscellaneous kind of self-identified organizations, but that serve the same purpose. We also want to make sure that we are creating student advocates and collaborators and amplifying their voice, so I'm going to turn it over to Camilla, who's our Partners and Education Coordinator, to talk a little bit about our Student District Advisory Council.
Good evening. So this year, we have launched our Student District Advisory Council. Over the summer, we did a lot of research on how these would be conducted, and we opened up our application process to our students in the beginning of the year. We received 46 applications, a few from parents and one from someone outside of the district. And we were supposed to cut it down, but after reading why our students wanted to be involved, I couldn't do it, so I invited all 46. In our first meeting, we had 30 students, and in our second meeting, we've only had two. In our second meeting, we had 26, and we had all high schools represented, including our Early College Academy program and Success at Anderson. So during this year, we are just setting our norms for our students and doing a lot of relationship building to establish what they want to accomplish out of this, as well as making sure that they feel empowered to tell us and give us some feedback. So we have a couple of internal individuals who are presenting their initiatives to our students, so that's exciting. And one big aspect of this year is that we are doing a service project. So our students have identified projects that are, they're taking on social issues that directly impact them, and we're breaking them up into four groups, and you'll be invited to our presentation. We're doing a Shark Tank idea, so they get to present out to you guys, as well as their families and committee and community members, and we'll identify one project that they'll accomplish in second semester. We're going back to Courtney, sorry.
Oh, okay. We can end it right here.
So we also know that effective family engagement is critical to student success and achievement, as well as to our success as a district, and we believe that training is critical to building staff capacity to partner more effectively with their families. As a district, we need to have a solid understanding of best strategies and practices to engage families in a meaningful way, and so we've decided to create more learning opportunities for KCPS staff related to family engagement. So far, we've hosted a two-day parent coordinator boot camp, which included our parent liaisons, our parent involvement specialists, our homeschool coordinators, and some of their administrators, as well as our social workers and language services staff, because sometimes in our buildings, those are the folks that have the best relationships and the closest relationships with our families, so we want to make sure that we are all kind of on the same page and they can support them and engage them in more meaningful ways. We're working to schedule a three-hour professional development opportunity for building and district leaders, so that it's coming from the top down. We are all, again, on the same page. I welcome you guys to come to that training, too, once I get that scheduled. We also have... We also have, uh, our monthly professional development for our Title I staff, which also includes, again, the social workers and language services staff, too, and those are pretty well attended. And finally, new this year, we've partnered with the Student Support Services Department to create a professional learning catalog, and so our office is, uh, teaching, facilitating six courses, um, and those, those courses cover family engagement, like 101, engagement events, fostering communications or engagement, or fostering engagement through communication, community partnerships, and volunteer system management. So, we're excited about this. And so, schools or departments can contact our office directly and schedule something for their staff. And finally, we were excited to launch our first district-wide family empowerment center in August. Uh, the center focuses on building staff, uh, building capacity, both for staff and families, and provides access to information about resources and programs that help students thrive and helps families thrive. Our open house had over sixty attendees, uh, that included staff, families, partners, our DAC executive committee, some of you all came, and we appreciate that, and our partners. We've also had a lot of partners express interest in wanting to get embedded in that family empowerment center, and that's through providing resources and materials for our resource library, and providing training opportunities for our staff, for our families, and for our students even. So, we are working to get those workshops scheduled. Uh, so far, through the family empowerment center, we've served eight schools, staff from eight schools, and parents from four schools. But we do know that, um, the center is at Central. We know that transportation is an issue for a lot of our families, and that Central may not be the most convenient or accessible location, so we've been working with schools to set up their own site-based resource centers. So, right now, we're working with, uh, Truce Banneker in Melcher, and a couple other schools have expressed an interest in wanting to create their own, uh, parent resource centers as well. So, we look forward to continuing to empower our schools and our families, whether it's through the empowerment center at Central, or to their own site-based, uh, resource center.
Table this time. Um, sorry. Not, not dismissing you all. Are there any questions or, um, comments that you want, have any interest in making at this time?
A, I wanted to thank you for your efforts, um, and for sharing kind of the, of the thirty, um, organizations that currently exist, how many of those are, are active at their schools? Do you have a sense of that?
Well, yes and no. So, I can kind of go from what was active last year. I know that some of them have had, uh, a little trouble getting started this year, if they were active last year. So, I can get you those numbers of what we consider active, and so would you be thinking active is having met for this school year already? Or...
I would defer your judgment on that.
Okay, okay. I can provide you some information in a Friday update, and a definition of what I'm gonna consider active.
Thank you. Mr. Barca.
Uh, I love what you all do. Um, I love what everyone does, but specifically you all. Um, I, I think that your ability to impact, um, or to engage with students as well as their families is paramount to everything that we do, um, and, and it really empowers them to be engaged in ways that I don't know that they're, um, really getting outside of their schools. And so, I, I want to, I guess, commit to you that I, I want to continue to look for ways, um, and, and ask Linda and Dr. Bedell to also help with this, uh, and my colleagues on the board, um, to provide more funding access and, and ways for students and their parents to engage in the process of us spending their dollars. Um, and so, uh, I think beyond me asking you a question you probably shouldn't answer in front of this full administration, um, know that, um, I am consciously looking for ways to provide a level of empowerment for you all, um, to pass through to your constituencies there.
Thank you. We appreciate that support, and our students and families will too, for sure.
Um, I would echo my colleague. This is obviously an area that I am super, um, wanting and rooting for you guys to get off the ground and do well, and I, I wanted to start with, I love the philosophy that it is about capacity building. It is not about you doing all the work, it is about you being there to support everybody that wants you and just needs to learn what you know how to do. Um, I love that you're doing the trainings even for our own administration, because I think they, in their heart of hearts, want this for their schools, for their students, for their families. Sometimes they just don't know where to begin, or just need that extra encouragement that I assume you're getting. Um, a suggestion on the active, active is such a, I would tell you, because I had been asked to do this myself many years ago, who's just started, who's high-functioning, and kind of who's everybody in the middle, is kind of your rough, you know, um, just as a suggestion. Um, and then, um, Camilla, I just, I would love to see this board, um, somehow begin to hear more of a student voice, and I know this is a very simple thing, but public comment, there's ten slots. I would love it if the students that are participating in the SDAC, um, kind of how the DAC has now started to come each time and speak, you know, they can see the agenda. We would love to hear, you know, especially as it related to something we may be having to take, you know, some action on. Student voices are so needed and appreciated, so, thank you for...
Mr. Wass.
I was quite impressed when I went to the opening of the center over at East High School, uh, Central High School earlier this year, back in the nineteen-sixties, when I was growing up, if a girl got pregnant, she went into hiding for several months, and the idea of allowing a student to continue with their growth and education is great. While I was at the center, though, I talked to some of the staff, and I asked what all the programming would be, because it, they already had the study area for, uh, girls starting their families, but, um, it seemed like it was a work in process, and I got the idea that the community use was going to be an evolving project. Uh, over the last few months, what all, uh, has come about? What's it being used for primarily now?
Primarily, and let me say one thing, so the early head start program is, I think, what you're referring to, that's at Central, that is in the family empowerment wing, and so we have provided some training to those girls there and support for them and their babies. Um, but so far, what we're seeing the most use for the center is through staff members getting resources and materials and supplies to take back to their own schools. They've come over for uniforms, they've come over for uniforms, it's a, it's a big one, and there's, you know, we have the family store, but sometimes they need kind of uniforms right then that day, or the next day. So, they come over, they get uniforms, they get, um, reading materials for their parents, and things to take back to their building. The parents who have come in have gotten, uh, books for their students, and kind of parenting guides and those pamphlets that were on the, the bookshelf. Um, we did have a workshop scheduled, but it had to be canceled due to some miscommunication and some issues on the partners' end, but we do look forward to having those workshops, um, getting those scheduled in the summer, so it will be used for that. And I know some community members and partners have had meetings in that space, they have not come through me, but sometimes I've gone to the space and they're in there conducting business, which is fantastic, so I have no problem with it.
Thank you so much, and, um, we really appreciate the work. It's really crucial, and, um, thank you for your engagement, too, with the district advisory, um, committee. We really appreciate their role and act, active engagement with us, both at our monthly meetings, but just through the work that you all are doing together. So, we see them as critical partners, so, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Dr. Bedell, um, we have, uh, the regular business items at this point.
Yeah, the administration is seeking approval from the board, um, authorization to commit capital projects fund balance. It's a specific project and expenditure budget in the amount of, I thought we had adjusted this...
We have.
Four point nine.
Four point nine, yes.
Four point nine million, so it's still reading at five point two, but four point nine million. Linda.
All right. Good evening. It's a little unusual for you to have a PowerPoint during the business items, um, but we thought it would be good just to take you back to some of the information you've had over the last couple of weeks as we make this request. Specifically, just a couple of really important pieces of information. By statute and DESI accounting standards, money that is placed into the capital projects fund is specifically separated for that purpose and cannot be, um, used for any other thing. And, um, that includes proceeds from sale of capital assets, and as you know, we've just sold the twelve-eleven McGee property, those revenues were received. Mr. Barca shared that with you in his treasurer's report earlier. So, those funds were placed into that capital project fund and need to be used for those purposes. So, um, over the last many, many weeks, uh, I've been working with the cabinet and school leadership and our facilities leaders on what some of our major needs are, so that we could, um, rather than sit on these funds, put to, put them to use on some of the things that we've been waiting for. Here's the list for you, you've reviewed those, they've been in your packet. Um, we did pull one item off, which is why, as Dr. Bedell noted, at one point it was five point two-five million on your, um, agenda, and we've reduced it to four point nine, because we believe that we have, um, made a final fix on the east elevators that are gonna give us several more lives, several more years of life, and not require a replacement right now. So, we didn't want to ask for that commitment of funds and then not need it and then do that. So, we're, right now, we're just seeing if we think we have that matter fixed, so therefore our total's been reduced. So, why these projects? Um, again, as I mentioned, these are the priorities that we've set forth based on most urgent needs, and you, you saw a trend in those. They focus on heating and cooling, where we have non-functioning or soon-to-non-function systems. Playgrounds, I think we have three playgrounds that are in major need of replacement, just based on age and appropriateness for the age of children in those environments. We have some sound systems, in some cases where they, um, do not exist in buildings, where we've not been able to provide particularly some of our elementary schools with an appropriate system, or we have systems that have failed to continue to function. And then we are asking for, at this point in time, something we might normally ask for as we get further in the budget process, which is some, are some allocations for general paving, roofing, and, um, exterior building work such as tuck pointing. The district has a nice rotation where every spring or summer, we try to do a little bit of that and keep up, so that it's not getting as far behind as it could, um, not to say that we're current by any sense, but our practice in the past has been, um, to need to wait until the budget is approved and then come for those monies. Then we've really missed those good spring and summer months to get the work done before school starts. So, asking you for this now will let us get that scoped with an engineer, get those RFPs out, and start that work in March, April, May, June, and have it done before school starts. So, just kind of improving our timing. Interior door replacements at one building that is very old, and I apologize, I looked up how old the building was, um, but these are, um, original to the building and are just literally, they have to go. And then the final item is not actually a facility-related, but is the addition of some short buses to get us to a full fleet of six short buses, combining some money that we've already squirreled away in transportation for two, um, to allow us to own and control, as we did under a lease situation last spring, um, enough short buses to create activity opportunities, um, for our kids and make sure they hit them. As you know, the, um, the size of the student transportation system inside Kansas City Public Schools boundaries with us plus our charters is simply too large, and the demand for drivers is simply too great. And all of us, um, inside KCPS boundaries and outside are really suffering from a lack of a driver pool. And if you think about how those activities are happening after school, guess what our buses are doing? They're taking kids home from school. And so, while I might have a couple of buses sitting unused, I don't have drivers to drive them, because they're driving kids home from school. We did, um, work pretty carefully on an analysis to see the return on this, and in less than two years, somewhere more in the one-and-a-half-year range, we will pay ourselves back because of the savings between paying for a charter with a profit and a driver in it as to paying just for fuel. So, what happens next, should you approve these for us? We have some RFPs sitting ready to go out the gate tomorrow, um, specifically the bus one. And then, as soon as those RFPs are come back, we'll evaluate those bids, bring those bids and contract recommendations to you for approval, let the contracts, and get started with the goal that we're able to complete everything on this list by the first of August. Questions?
Thank you for this, um, presentation, and I, I want to say, I'm, I'm really pleased it was the prior board's intention, uh, that when we sold twelve-eleven McGee successfully, that this, these monies should be rolled back into addressing capital needs and invest, direct investments back in our schools, and so it's wonderful to see this happening. Before I, um, turn to my colleagues for questions, I do want to ask, on the RFPs, does that include, um, outreach to MBE and WBE vendors? They will be included in your seeking of proposals, correct?
Absolutely, and these are great projects for us to do this with, because they're smaller projects. So, we really hope to, um, to bring you several with some good MBE/WBE participation, and they will be targeted when we release those.
Thank you so much. Mr. Barca.
Great question. Um, I wanted to inquire of the exterior improvements, uh, specifically around some of the doors and such, are we modifying anything that would, um, change the historic character of any of our structures?
No, mostly what we're doing, um, with the exterior improvements, it won't be much in the way of doors, actually, it's going to be tuck pointing, it's gonna be sealing off to keep moisture out of our buildings.
We're saving our historic structures.
Yes.
Wonderful. That's all, I just wanted to make sure.
Ms. Cortez.
So, I just want to make sure I understand, by essentially pre-funding the maintenance components, will that allow us kind of rolling into future years to shift the process up earlier?
Get on that same, right. That's exactly what I'd like to do, is just get ahead of that, so that this time, every year, we're planning for those spring months, and so we're just kind of moving ahead.
That's great. Thanks.
All right. Are there any additional questions? All right. Thank you so much. I believe then it is, uh, in order to receive, um, a motion to authorize the commitment to capital projects, uh, in the amount of four point, I'm looking to make sure I get the correct number here, four point nine million, um, so I will seek a motion.
Some.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing no debate, um, this will be a roll call vote. Secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes, and again, we are delighted. Thank you for the hard work and, and making the right use of these funds. Um, Dr. Bedell, there's another business, regular business item.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and this should be a, uh, typical, uh, action that we're asking you all to approve. It's our Kelly Services Second Amendment at, in the amount of five point four million. This is for our substitute services in the school district.
Are there any questions about this item? All right.
Seeing no questions, it would be in order to receive a motion, uh, for the services Second Amendment.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing no debate, um, uh, the secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wassersstrum?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. The next items are the consent items on the agenda. We have items one through thirty-six. Uh, is there any, um, are there any questions about any of these items on the consent agenda?
I'm just gonna share, um, I'm gonna have to abstain from the consent agenda, there's an organization on here that, the foundation that I run funds for the same program, so, uh, since I was a little behind this week, I didn't get a chance to pull it off, so...
Thank you so much for noting that. Are there any other questions about items on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing no other, uh, questions, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve consent items one through thirty-six.
Some move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing no debate, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser? Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Abstain.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you so much. The motion passes. Um, thank you, everyone, this, for this evening, the presentations, the staff that brought us tremendous information. The next board meeting is scheduled for November sixth, twenty nineteen. We will see you then.
All right. I gotta go back.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I gotta be to the airport. No, it's good. It's good. I knew it was gonna be long.
I was worried about you. No, this is right.